Calling this meeting to order, this is the regularly scheduled City of Rochester City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, May 27. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm out of order.
That's okay.
I'm out of order.
That's okay.
Call to order. It's a Tuesday. I don't know what I'm doing.
The whole place is out of order.
They all got it. They were all listening.
Salvia.
Here.
Bixson.
Here.
Hauser.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
King.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. As we start off our agenda, do we have any public comment for something that is not on our agenda this evening? If you could please approach the podium and let us know your name and your address, please.
My name is Heather McMahon. I work at Rochester Henry Ford, which is why I'm here. My address is 837 Dollar Bay Drive, Lake Orion, Michigan, 48362. What I'd like to address today is our need for the city council to support our actions that we're taking against the hospital. We're currently, hey, we've been in negotiations with the hospital for a contract for over two and a half years. And we actually are, this evening, this very evening, voting to strike against the hospital. If you would give me a few moments, if I'm able, I'd like to just speak about what that process has been and how that affects our community and our patients that we care for. Let's see. We've been in our contract negotiations for two and a half years, first with Ascension and now with Henry Ford. And this is not in anyone's best interest for this community's caregivers to be forced to strike for a fair contract. Our contract expired in September of 2022, and we signed an extension until June of 2023, when Ascension's unfair labor practices drove us to expire the contract and host two informational pickets. After the pickets, negotiations lagged and tensions mounted, and the hospital threatened to call the Oakland County sheriffs to have our staff removed from the lobby. The nurses were forced to go on a three-day unfair labor practice strike in September of 2023, and we did reach some, an interim wage agreement at that time, to get our nurses caring for our community again. Ascension left, and Henry Ford came in in October of last year, promising to treat us with respect and bargain in good faith. It turns out that they are just as anti-union, if not worse, than Ascension was. We have filed five unfair labor practices against Henry Ford so far for the things that they continue to do illegally. In April of 2025, Henry Ford gave a last, best, and final offer that would weaken our hard-fought one protections for our patients. It denies any conversation around a safe staffing matrix. Wages that are currently paid at other hospitals is what they're offering and no more. What they're paying their other hospitals is what they want to pay us. We took the hospital's proposal to the membership, and we voted it down with 88 percentage of our membership voting and 84% of those nurses voting no. The hospital has refused since then to come back to the bargaining table, and we fear that they will implement their illegal offer regardless of what our members and our union recommend and say. We are nurses. We want to save lives. We want to care for the community safely. We do not want to be fighting with one of the most well-known and before these negotiations, well-respected hospital systems in Michigan. We ask the city council if you can help us and what you can do to commit to help get Henry Ford back to the bargaining table with a fair offer that works for all the nurses and protects our community and this community with a safe staffing matrix. When it is you or your mom or your new child or grandchild receiving inadequate care because the hospital staff can't, the hospital can't staff appropriately, will you help them? I am currently training in the operating room, but I worked on the floor in the med search unit for two and a half years. I'm also a union steward for OPEIU. Having an enforceable staffing matrix is critical for protecting our nurses at the hospital and for the safety of our community. As it currently stands, there is no staffing law at the state or federal level, and the nurses at Henry Ford Rochester currently have no staffing matrix. A matrix is an enforceable limit on the maximum number of patients a nurse can have at any given time. Since Henry Ford took over, night shift nurses on the rehab floor have reported having up to 12 patients each. In labor and delivery, they have reported having five or six newborn babies for one nurse. In ER, our nurses have reported having six patients minimum each, and when there's a call-in, they are assigned additional patients from there. While working on the mud search floor, I myself have had seven patients multiple times. And these patients require, can require care from almost anything, from fresh post-operative care to COVID to hospice. And I know of several night shift nurses on my floor that I worked with that were assigned eight and nine patients apiece at night. Within the last six months, and this is continuing into the last six months, as the hospital chooses to not staff safely. Any single nurse knows that these ratios are unsafe. When the hospital is the sole decision-maker for the staffing ratios, they're the ones who get to set the standards with no accountability. We want to change that with a matrix like what our patients and nurses have won at McLaren McComb Hospital, University of Michigan Hospital, Henry Ford Genesis Hospital, and McLaren Flint Hospitals. McLaren McComb has an enforceable matrix, and when the hospital violates that staffing matrix, the nurses who work short receive a monetary payment. Patients are protected because the hospital is held accountable to safe, predefined staffing levels on all floors, following professional nursing standards. Professional nursing organizations put out recommendations for safe staffing levels, and we propose protective language in our contract following those standards. These provide for dips in support staff and opening and closing of new units. The safe staffing matrix is designed to keep patients and nurses safe, not cost the hospital money and penalties. Thank you for considering the fight that we find ourselves in. We want to care for the community safely, period. And we ask that this council help in any way that you can to help us negotiate for safe staffing levels for us and for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather. Thank you for being here. Thank you for making us aware of those comments. Thank you. Are there any other public comments for something not on the agenda? Okay. We will move on to our agenda. Next up, we have some recognition of some Dinosaur Hill volunteers. Councilmember Trent, I think you.
Yes, I was the one.
Yep.
Who requested this. So we have Amanda Felk, the renowned teacher and, whatever you are, taking care of Dinosaur Hill's children and teaching and naturalists, anything. Dinosaur Hill-driven Amanda Felk is the one employee, well, the one full-time employee that does so much there. And thank you for coming forward to give, to recognize the volunteers that help you run Dinosaur Hill. The other thing was that, what brought my attention to this, these awards, was the Presidential Volunteer Service Award that Amanda Felk took on her own behalf to recognize her valuable volunteers. And I wanted her to present this as she knows more of what they do, but I do know they do a lot.
So the Presidential Volunteer Service, I'm sorry, the President's Volunteer Service Award is an acknowledgement of volunteer hours with different levels based on how many hours and the age of the volunteer. It starts for volunteers as young as five and goes up to 105-plus, if you can find someone that's able to volunteer at that age. And so there is a bronze, a silver, and a gold level, depending on how many hours with the children, having fewer hours required to reach different levels. This is to honor civic engagement and community-mindedness. And Dinosaur Hill became a certifying organization in the end of 2023. It was recommended by another community member who ended up not volunteering with us. And so for 2024, I wanted to make sure that I kept the accurate records that a certified organization needs to do in order to honor my volunteers. So we do have three of our kiddo volunteers that each had 52 hours over the course of 2024, as well as four adults that received. We had one bronze level, two of the silver level, and one gold level volunteer. So the gold level is over 500 hours in a year.
And how long, and that person is Margaret Whittick? Exactly. And could you tell us the years previous, I mean, not the hours, but how long has Margaret been volunteering for Dinosaur Hill?
Long before I ever thought of coming to Dinosaur Hill.
Maybe several decades.
I think maybe so.
Okay. There you go.
When I, in fact, was just able to be a five-year-old volunteer.
You could have, yes. And then Stephanie Burdo Smith, bronze, 174 hours. And then Terry Wissa, bronze. Yes.
Yeah. Stand up, yes.
So Councilmember Trent, since we want to give them pins, should we just, you want to call them?
Did there was anything else you wanted to add on that they are the lifeblood of what I found out when I started going to Dinosaur Hill? How does Amanda do this all on her own? Come to find out.
I beg. I beg a lot.
That's right. And you get a lot done. And I wanted to publicly thank you for all you do for our city and your work at Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve. Okay. And so we will say, how many hours, right?
Okay. All right. Stephanie.
No.
Come on down.
Okay. So just so everyone knows, this pin is not the official presidential pin, but it's a pretty cool pin that we found to honor these amazing volunteers. It says Rockstar. So you are all rock stars.
So that's the bronze for 174 hours and the children.
This is a bronze pin for you.
49 hours.
49 hours, and your name is? Tyler, congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Get the internet.
Autumn? Autumn, congratulations. Thank you for your service. And you are?
Brendan.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your service. Keep it up.
Sarah's going to take a picture.
Who do we have? I was grabbing a picture. We're going to, we'll get everybody up here at once to take the photos.
So maybe Stephanie and team months, you guys can stay up here. Yep. Let's come down in this side.
Is Terry Wissa here? Oh, there she is. Yes, I saw her.
Terry.
174 hours. You're keeping up with the journey.
Yeah. And you're a rock star. Thank you. Rock star.
I can get it on my phone.
Margaret Whittick. We're saving the gold one. We're saving the gold one?
But then it was 500. Did they lose count? They have 500.
500. 500. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Dinosaur Hill.
I think the fire department approved. We can do it all right.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. Thank you. You're a rock star. Thank you.
Chris Brown? He's not able to.
Okay. He's bronze?
He wasn't able to.
Okay. Okay. Well. And Eric.
Eric Chouet. He's got a silver. Yep. Are you sure it's a silver? Every time I go, it seems like it's a silver too. We do have to keep track of the hours. Eric just keep in and out.
Okay. All right. I trust you. I trust you. Thank you. Congratulations to all of you.
I knew I was going to take a picture. I would love that. So. I mean, I don't, come on up.
Yes.
You're the one. You've got something. You come up.
Just peek over here, show. I don't want to photo bomb.
Hey, you okay?
Yeah. Actually, just zoomed in on our video.
Yeah. Just us, yes.
Took a little video.
Yeah, exactly. Whispering in the corner. Nicely done.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have some more recognition of incredible service in our community. Councilmember Sage, I know you had some thoughts on this, and I know that Councilmember Jones also, since she was involved in the cemetery, so I'm going to read this proclamation for Dave Carter. So whereas Mr. Dave Carter of Carter Cemetery Preservation generously supported the community restoration event held on May 10 at the historic Mount Avon Cemetery, and whereas Mr. Carter demonstrated outstanding leadership in assembling a dedicated team of seven volunteers, coordinating necessary supplies, and working closely with Councilmember Debbie Jones and Gail.
Petrie.
Petrie. Petrie, thank you. I was thinking it was Petrie. From Stony Creek Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, to ensure the success of this meaningful endeavor in support of America 250. And whereas Mr. Carter is widely recognized for his compassionate and respectful approach to restoring headstones, and whereas the City of Rochester values Mr. Carter's knowledge, experience, and dedication in caring for one of the community's most treasured historic sites, our Mount Avon Cemetery, and now therefore be proclaimed that I, Nancy Salvia, the mayor of the City of Rochester, do hereby extend heartfelt appreciation and sincere gratitude to Dave Carter for his service. Signed this day, May 27, 2025. Thank you. If you'd like to come forward. Thank you so much.
I can get it on my phone.
You guys want to be on it? Thank you so much.
I can get on my phone.
All right. You're good. Anything you want to say about cleaning these historic headstones?
This is special for me, and I mentioned it to Debbie when we were, you know, doing our cemetery rest, our training and stuff. I don't think Nick and Leanne knows, but back when I started 15 years ago, there was three municipalities. It was you guys, City of Lebonia, and City of Novi. You guys were my first municipality.
Yeah.
And since then, we've just, we've grown to 24 municipalities and four private. So I just want to thank you guys for the support, and I look forward to, you know, more restoration, trying to make Mount Avon, you know, a little more beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So moving on to item five, which is our consent agenda. We have consideration to approve a request from the Downtown Development Authority to hold the annual sidewalk sales event scheduled for July 17 through the 19th. Item B is consideration to approve a request from Downtown Development Authority to hold dancing in the streets. That is the same weekend, Saturday, July 18. The application references a band called Collision Six. And item C is receipt of the check register. Council.
Move to support the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Sage. Support by Trent. Any discussion on the motion?
So I have.
Councilmember King.
Thank you. I do have a question. I know the fire chief, and we don't have anybody from TSD here tonight, so I was just going to ask the manager, maybe if you could give us an update in the next manager report. I'm just curious to know how we go about selecting the beverage sponsor for these types of events. I just don't know if it's, I'm curious to know, is it like an open invite for all of our businesses in town or how that, you know, comes about?
You have to ask Chrissy to come here to speak to that.
Yes. So if you could get an answer and put it in the manager's report, please. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? City Clerk, the roll call, please. Salvia. Yes. Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. There is no old business, no public hearings, no legislative deliberation. Moving on to reports and regular business. Item nine, item A is an update on our Clinton River Trail washout. I know there has been much work done on this and much more to be done. I know we are still working on funding sources. I see a seal here, so should I just turn it over to you, a seal, to give us an update? I know there wasn't anything in our packet, so we're really just looking, an update. You know, this is a very visible part of our community. A lot of people are asking about it, so just looking for an engineering update.
So we're about, for the Clinton River Trail washout, we're about 70% complete with the design. We're basically rebuilding the washout back to where it was, the trail where it was with the clay material and is that sand. We had sand before, and the water was going through the sand, and then create a weak subgrade underneath and end up washing out. We're doing with the clay now. This is going to stop the water from going through, and also we're putting a culvert underneath the trail to regulate the water level in the wetland area. The trail is going to be 10 foot wide with five-foot shoulder on both sides of the trail, and we're one on two slope going down to the existing ground. We're currently working with Eagle. We're going back and forth on the water level in the wetland area. We're going to have two foot of water in the wetland area, and then we're about, by tomorrow, we'll be submitting to Eagle for working the wetland and flood plain. We have a wetland on the north side of the trail, and we have flood plain on the south side of the trail. So to do the rebuild of the trail, we need Eagle permit to allow us to do the work. And hopefully, within a month or two, we get their approval. Once we get their approval, then we go out for a bid, and then, once we know what the price would be to rebuild it, then hopefully the funds are available, and then we can start construction.
Any questions? Councilmember Trent.
Ah, yes. Thank you for your update. I know that this project is important to a lot of people.
It is.
And also the herons and the rookery, you were asking about how that was going to affect their nesting.
Right. So that's exactly what I was referring to. They want, Eagle wants to have two foot of water in the wetland area. When we had the collapse, we had 10 foot of water in that wetland area, which Eagle will not permit that anymore. They want us to stay with the two foot, so we brought the concern with the rookery that we have, and then they took it to DNR, and DNR came back and said, two foot of water or four foot of water is not going to change anything. So we're going with the two foot of water. That's what they're going to allow.
If it goes, is it, it's two feet, does it go below that, though? I mean, could it?
So we're going to have a pipe.
I mean, that's not a lot of water.
So we're going to put a pipe underneath the trail, set it two higher, two foot higher than the ground.
Okay.
So when we have rain, when the waters come into this area, to the wetland area, the pipe is going to just basically allow it to drain to the south side of the trail, to the river, and not have a 10 foot of head on the north side.
All right.
So the culvert is going to regulate the water level and stays at two feet.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Council? No. Thank you, a seal. You have something else to say?
And then for the CRT retaining wall, which we have at, I think, Big Town.
Yep.
We're working with Eagle on that, too. That one, the topo is complete, the geotechnical reports are done. We're working with Eagle on how much room we have for the embankment, because if they're going to make us have a skinny area to rebuild that wall, we cannot build it with one-on-one slope. That means we're going to have to drive sheet piling, and then it's very expensive. We'll see how we're going to fund that. They do allow us to go flatter, or they can probably put rocks or boulder rocks on the embankment from the top to the bottom. So we're waiting on them, on a response back, so still ongoing with Eagle.
Okay. And that's on the other part of the trail, closer, on the curve.
Yes.
The washout from, before the big washout.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. It looked like they protected that area, and it's cordoned off so that people don't go in that little embankment. Yeah, looking good. Thank you that it's protected. It's the one next to the Clinton River, next to South, near the South Street Bridge. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, a seal. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, this is consideration to approve a contract with Davy Tree for street tree trimming and removal for the years 2025 through 2028. We're getting out ahead of this one.
Yes.
I like it. Let us know, Nick, what's happening?
Yeah. So, yeah, we put the tree trimming and removal out for bid. It will be a three-year contract. We had eight contractors that bid on this project, and Davy Tree was a low bidder. First year was 31,000. Second year will be 30,000, and the third year will be 29,000.
If you're not done, I just have a comment. The variance in the bids.
I know.
Absolutely insane. I don't understand, 175,000 compared to 30,000, and even the hourly rates, and how do you interpret that?
So very good question. So I had one of the contractors reach out to me in regards to the bids and how they came in, so I asked them that very same thing. So they had put in their bid to trim every tree in the city. They literally touched every tree in the city.
Okay.
Well, our trees have been well-maintained for numbers of years now, so every tree does not need to be trimmed. So that's where you see that huge discrepancy in that bid.
Do you think that it was worthy of then going back and having them just give an estimate for the, I know we already have a good relationship with Davy, so that probably makes sense, but since they didn't bid the same?
Well, they bid the same, had the same information, they just went.
It's a fair bid. It's a fair bid.
Yeah. We can't guide them, then they'd know what the bid is. And there was two contractors that were in that realm, and then you seen it kind of just.
Yeah.
Walk away. So.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hauser.
To follow, but I spoke to Nick about the same, very same issue, and you're comfortable with it?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Davy Tree for street trimming and removal for years 25 through 28.
Motion by Hauser. Support by Jones.
Sorry.
Is that what that was? Was that, was that was a support? Okay. Support by Jones?
One or the other.
One or the other? Any other questions, discussion on the motion? City Clerk, the roll call, please. Salvia. Yes. Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item C, this is consideration to approve Mizwa paving to repair park pathway. Otherwise, they're just going to be hutch in my mind.
It's much easier.
Yep.
So not to be confused, so last meeting, we approved the block grant. So this is essentially phase two of the path replacement in Minnesota Park, which this which this literally cover almost the entire path coming from, again, the maintenance garage, all the way down to the walking bridge, so. And Mizwa is also going to be holding their prices, so we're looking for approval of $51,356 to continue improving the paths.
It was Bowin. It wasn't Hutch, it was Bowin.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I just have a comment, and I believe Jason sent these pictures, so thank you for the live photos. It really does help when you're talking about areas of the, and there's a map, and I struggle with figuring it out. So this, the map also shows it needs to be done. I mean, the picture. So thanks for the actual visual. That was helpful.
You're welcome.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I guess that was a motion. It was a motion of thank you for the picture and a motion to approve. Is this right, Mizwa? Paving to repair the park pathways.
Okay, motion by Jones. Support by Sage. Any other questions or discussion? City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to reports from various boards and commissions, I'll make a note that we're going to add item G, which is the Asset Management Committee Meeting, which met during this recent timeframe. So we'll put that, item G. So item A will be the report from City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Jones.
Yes. City, okay. Well, the fun thing is, we met outside for our meeting. So we met at the table that's outside, which was lovely. It was a beautiful night. Nick always attends, as well as several people from the Parks Department. So a couple of things we have going on is that we are going to do a raised bed garden, sensory garden. That's going to be over by the All Abilities Park. And one of the exciting things is one of the students that are now on our commission came in with plant ideas and she's going to kind of take that project on. So we're excited about that. I think that'll be very good. We also are doing a microphone, a sense, a nature microphone in the park. And we have a Cub, our Boy Scout that's working on his Eagle project. On Saturday, I met he and his father in the location. He had stated that he didn't want to be just a worker bee. He wanted to be part of the whole process, which obviously makes sense. So we met there. He kind of picked the location. He's going to do a design for it and that he will fundraise for it. And I told him that we would have him come in front of city council with the plans once they're done, so. What else? We talked about paths and gardens and am I missing?
The little eyebrows on the park.
Yeah, and the elbow gardens that are being worked on and lots of good and exciting things going on. So I think that was a highlight.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next up is Paint Creek Trailways. Councilmember Sage.
So we are still working through the transition to find a new trail manager. So we've basically done some triage and figured out what we need to do going forward. The primary project, obviously, is Bridge 31-7. We are on track with that. The DNR just released some new obstacles for us so we can upload some of the project plans, et cetera, and the legal boundaries. So that is on pace. That project needs to be completed by, I think it's October 2026. So I think there would be a thought that next spring it would start and finish then in the fall. That's the primary thing. We hope to have an update for you all as we move forward to try and solidify management at the trail. Currently, every commissioner is basically taking on tasks that the trail manager had been doing. And we're working through that now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the update. Next item is Rochester Community House. I will take this one. Community House met May 20th. There are two new board members for the Rochester Community House, Lynn Oates and Sue Upton. We talked about, obviously, the plan on the building renovation, the state funding. Something I think that's very exciting and part of this whole renovation project is the community house is going to hire Sue Keels to help with the why and strategic plan and fundraising, so that's great. There is a new TV and sound system coming into Room D. Still working on design concepts for the kitchen renovation. And they currently have six months of cash funding in the bank with the goal to double that before construction. Also, July 1st, 2025, is the 50th anniversary of Community House as the nonprofit.
Wow.
So good things happening at the community house. Next item is Rochester. A question? Yes.
Just something for Nick. I took a picture and I was going to get to you. The evergreens that were planted, I think they're evergreens on the edge of the parking lot are dying. So you might want to-
We have a year guarantee on them.
There's like three of them that look like, one's almost completely gone.
Well, I have a plant for that. It's called a tree. I got them to, it's five of them. Was it five to Nick Schaefer? For, to replace. They're junipers, red cedar junipers that we talked about.
Well, they would, the people that you brought up.
If they're under warranty, if they're under warranty, we want them to-
They have a year guarantee, so.
Yeah.
And then the other, just a comment, because I walk through there with my dog all the time, is that they're building a structure around the garbage can.
Finally.
Dumpster.
The dumpster. It is huge. It's like you have a little party in there. So that is, is being worked, and the tent is up, which is exciting.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
It's my walking pad.
Excellent. Councilmember Trent?
Those other trees will be planted in, to fill that area out, though, because all those arbivides don't fill up that whole area. Shout out for native trees whenever I can.
Wonderful. Moving on to Rochester Avon Recreation Authority. Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Did you notice I did not say Ra-Ra? I pronounced it all the way.
I know. It gets confusing with Ra-Yah. Okay, so a few new things. We approved the expense allocation for the front awning. We finally got the proposal back. They're still finalizing the permitting for it. But Ingram Roofing is going to be do that, doing that. It's just under $50,000. So there'll be a brand-new awning there, lighting, all of it. Parking lot repair, there's, we also approved for Merzois to do the parking lot there. It's not for the primary parking lot. It's actually behind the building where the dumpsters are and, which also now backs up to the hammock park. It'll help to direct water away from the building, but back there, it was just in such a state of disrepair. It was terrible. And I think the employees also, you know, go through that way, so it'll be great to have that done. Couple of things. So we had our first revenue month exceeding $400,000. I think camps are a big driver of this, but so far, year-to-date, through, through May, we are at 1.175 billion of revenue. Last year, we were at 921,000. So off to a really good start, you know, for, for the year. Couple of other things. I think there are some flyers here for city council, but I want other people to know. Ra-Ra is doing a ribbon cutting for the hammock park on Wednesday, June 25th at 4:00 PM. The hammock park is directly off of the trail, right behind the Ra-Ra building. So please come out at 4:00 PM on the 25th. And then also, there is going to be a ribbon cutting celebrating Bites and Beats by the Paint Creek at Lyons Park on Thursday, May 29th at 4:00 PM. That is at Amphitheater, kind of by Frank Rewald's headquarters there. And so that's this Thursday at 4 o'clock. Yes.
That's this Thursday.
This Thursday. Yes, May 29.
I know. It's May 29.
So that's coming up here quick. So those two items, mark your calendars for, and then, one more thing back here. Also, I think city manager or DPW, Nick, I think they might have reached out to you about haulback and JC fields and you might be working on the condition of those fields. They need a little bit of-
We actually have a meeting today.
Improvement. Okay, great. Oh, and then the last thing. They opened up a new room right at the front where you come in. It used to be the old reception area. It is now an esports party room, and so there's gaming systems. Kids can log in and play each other. It's really cool setup. They're going to be doing birthday parties and other events in there. There's going to be an open house on June 7th for that, so families can come out and see what it's all about. They'll get free gaming credits and stuff just for coming, so.
Can adults game there, too?
Adults, I believe, are welcome to game.
Okay.
So, yeah, kind of something new and different.
Yeah, question, and then just a quick comment. There was some talk, I don't know where I heard it, but that they were going to do a mural on the side of the building once the hammock park was up that said, "Welcome to Rochester." Is that discussed at all?
Yes, there are plans. I have not seen the designs yet. I think that's still in process.
Yeah, totally have to bring it to council.
I was going to say that would have to be approved.
Does it have to come to council or planning?
No, not planning. It's because we're-
That's what I thought.
We haven't seen it yet.
The other thing is, because it aligns with Ra-Yah, because we fund and support through the city Rochester Hills Camp Safari, which I just want to do a shout-out for that. It's a, it's an amazing camp, but you can talk to it if you want. I checked today. They have 19 campers so far, but they have room for a lot more.
Yeah, so this is the first year, I believe it's Camp Safari. It used to be funded, well, for a period of time, it was funded by the schools for a few years, kind of post-COVID.
No, that's a different, this camp is funded completely by Ra, I think it's, well, at least Ra-Yah gives $14,000 towards it. And then Rochester Hills gives us some of that funding. So it's been around for a very long time, but I'm not, maybe previously, there was some other funding that was done. But it is for kids in the community that are socio-economically cannot afford to go to camp. It is an amazing, the word has got to get out for this camp. And they have bus pickup at both the Mobile Home Park and two other locations. The buses pick the kids up, they take them for the day, they bring them back. And so for, for parents, with two parents working, it is a summer program. It's basically, the whole summer starts in June, ends in August. I think it's eight weeks. You can sign up for one week. It's a very minimal cost to the families to participate. And it's one of the best things that Ra-Yah and Ra-Ra do together, so just a shout-out for that.
I think it's like $10 to $20 per camper or something. It's very affordable. There's another program called SCAMP, which is the-
That's the R.C.S. does SCAMP.
Yep, that's the Adaptive Summer Camp. And so more for kids with some sort of, you know, maybe health issue or other special needs. That, for a period of time, was funded by the schools because of money they received coming out of COVID. That funding no longer exists, but they have seen pretty good registration for that. There's a couple of spaces still available for that camp. So there's availability for both camps.
Both camps, yes.
Yep, contact, contact Ra-Ra.
Yep, yep, yep.
Great.
All right, next up, we have the Downtown Development Authority. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, the DDA Downtown Development Authority met on May 21st, last Wednesday. And they talked about having a successful groundbreaking on May 14th of the GRAM. They adopted their fiscal year 2026 budget formally, that the city council had already approved. They talked about their Love Local Art Committee Report, and it's a group of local art experts that gather to discuss short and long-term plans for the city of Rochester's art around our city. Give some structure around that, and they want to do a strategic, they, they plan on doing a strategic plan, just take a look at the whole city. So it will be more cohesive and thoughtful and funded, hopefully. I mean, and how to get funds. So there is also, part of the GRAM, a mural opportunity on the backside or the Farmer's Market side of Huntington Bank. And they were, they were refining, the, the DDA team was refining the language as to how to, to ask or get entries from local artists or local mural artists that would need to be submitted by June 20th, 2025. And, yeah, and that, oh, so, oh, so, I don't know, incidentally, the Pocket Park on University that is next to the previous owners of, or the previous Catching Fireflies, that little park area there will go back to its original owner. And that, it was, it was leased to the city or some sort of agreement with the city for many years. So catch everything?
Yep, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I think it's exciting that we have another mural potentially coming, and so calling all artists. The, the information should be out there, and of course, council will see that. But the DDA did review the language and kind of the criteria, but it's, it's open for artists, so it's going to be, should be a pretty cool addition. Councilmember King?
I was just going to ask about that real quick. Is that on the, is that on the Huntington Bank building?
Yes.
Okay, it's not on the Farmer, on the GRAM?
No, it's on the Huntington Bank, the faces of Farmer's Market. They, they agreed to, you know, we have to get agreement and sign off as to the approval to have a mural there. I'm sure they'll, they'll want to make sure it's, yeah, I'm sure it'll be beautiful.
Wonderful. Thank you. Item G, oh, no, I'm sorry. I don't want to miss the Historic Commission. Item F, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very exciting meeting. We welcome two new members, Julia Johnson and Donald Sinkowitz, who will be welcome addition and vibrants to our existing commission. We got an update on the Historical Plaque Program, and the question came up. Is there a way to get an inventory of eligible homes that would qualify under our program? So that we might be able to do a targeted campaign, particularly in the America 250 celebration. I think it would dovetail in nicely with that. So I guess I'll reach to administration.
Yeah, I would think, I think at BSNA, we can run a report and just put, with the, it's 1950?
It's 50 years old.
50 years old, okay. Yeah, that'd be easy. You can do that.
Wow. Wow, that's a lot of houses that qualify.
Hey, if it's always 50 years, is it gonna?
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Get a plan. Get a plan. Yeah.
We had a run on DUR books last month. Four were sold all over the city. Actually, no, maybe possibly they were all sold at city hall. Is that correct? Possibly. Nice work.
They take it serious out there. They're always talking it up when people come in, so.
We do appreciate that. And then the last question came up. So during COVID, we shut down the Samuel Harris Fountain. For those that don't know that fountain, it was located in the cemetery. We restored it and relocated it here outside of city hall. During COVID, we shut it down. Is it still functional? And do we need an inspection going forward, et cetera? We have close to $7,000 in the fund we had established 10 years ago to maintain this fountain. Is there a way we can get it operational again?
Into it. Can we look into it?
Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah, it should be.
Is that it? That's what they were doing, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item G, this is the Asset Management Committee Meeting. Councilmember Hauser, so this is where we talk about water, sewer, and roads.
The infrastructure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So on May 13th, 2025, we had an asset management meeting. I'm going to update you on some events and some construction that's going to take place in the city of Rochester over the summer and then potentially into next year. So as it stands right now, there's going to be some roadwork along First Street from the Walnut, from Walnut up to Helen. And then similarly, there will be some work on Walnut and Pine between Second and Fourth, right in the downtown area here. Our goal is to have that work commence July 1st. Well, it won't start until after July 1st. It will be finished by the end of this year. And if everything goes according to plan, it should take approximately 30 days from start to finish. And my understanding is that the city will work collaboratively and proactively with the residents in those affected areas, letting them know when the work is going to be taking place, parking restrictions and setting the timing. So again, that'll be in the downtown area over here after July 1st, but certainly before November 15th, when the road paving is supposed to start or finish. Another project that we have been looking at seriously and taking a lot of deliberative process in is some work on the east side. And for a certain amount of time, there's been a need to do some work over on the east side, in particular, lots of the curbs. And while the city is very cognizant of making certain that the jobs are done correctly, we also are very certain and confident that every dollar we spend is done with a sense of purpose and with justification. And so to that end, we have worked very well with the residents on that side of town. And specifically, Nick at DBW has done a really good job of communicating the plan and the program over to the residents on the east side. And I believe the agreement that we have reached is, work is going to take place next year, starting in June of next year, on the entire area. And we think this is a good fit for, for both the city and the residents, and here's why. Initially, the work was going to take two phases. It would have half of it this year and then half of it next year. By doing it all at one time, it obviously eliminates and reduces significantly the disruption to the residents on that side of town. But second most importantly is that the proposed work plan is what we believe to be the most sensible use of our dollars in that it's going to be a complete removal of the curb and gutter and milling the road down. Whereas previously, it had been contemplated that we were going to do kind of- down, whereas previously, it had been contemplated that we were gonna do kind of a patchwork and kind of a hopscotching around. And, and after a lot of deliberation, we wanna do things the right way. We wanna do things that is the most economical and pragmatic. And with conversations with the residents, I think we all bought into the program, hey, it may mean we have to wait another year, but when we do it next year, it's gonna be better for everyone, the city, the residents, and quality of life. So that'll be starting next year in that Stony Point area. And then, third, we had an update from Jason, who talked to us and gave us a very, very in-depth review of all the projects that are going on in the city of Rochester. And I believe that information is available on our city website. So to residents who are out there, to anyone who may be interested into the status of the various projects that are going on around town, you can go online and, and look them up. And so we were updated on that. And then I think we just talked a little bit about upcoming projects and then road projects, and those are all being worked by, by DPW, and we're trying very hard to be proactive when it comes to repairs and maintenance and, and preventative maintenance. And that is the, the update as it pertains to the Asset Management Meeting that was held on May thirteenth.
Okay. And for council's perspective, the dollars associated with those road projects, those are the dollars that were in the approved budget. So those projects will come forward to us, just like we approved the, the road projects tonight. Those will come forward to us for approval. But those dollars allocated in that meeting were relative to what was in the budget that we all agreed to. Councilmember King.
I was just wondering if we had already kind of shared the roadmap along with the timeline with the residents, or if that was gonna be posted to the city website, so that people can go out there and see that and they see exactly, you know, what streets are gonna be redone.
City manager? Not yet.
Yeah, not yet, until it comes in.
Until it comes.
Once, once we authorize spending of the money, then we'll publish it. Got it. Makes sense. Anyone else?
Very thorough.
All right, is there any other public comment tonight? All right, we will move on to general and miscellaneous. I'll start with the city clerk.
Just one thing. Last meeting, you all approved a resolution for the charter amendment to eliminate the primary. Just one point, if that is approved, then your filing deadline will change from April to July. So.
Oh, listen to us all, ooh. Interesting.
That's all, Your Honor, thank you.
City manager, you're, you're back from an exhausting time with family?
Yeah, in Texas. I just wanna thank staff, Leann and Nick and Jason and Carl and, and Chief John for the Memorial Day. I know a lot of folks up here were part of that. They kept me in the loop, but it was, hats off to them. It sounded like a really good event. I think that the medals to the, you started a new tradition, I heard, with the veterans and people. It was well-received, and I just wanna thank staff for digging in there. So even the contractors that were getting the grass cut and everything cleaned up, everything, and Dave, when Dave got the monuments ready, so it looks, I look at it every day, so I can see how good it looks. But the, just wanna thank staff for that and taking over while I was gone. Thanks.
Thank you. City attorney?
Just, I guess, an update with the clerk's update on the charter amendment. As soon as you did approve it at the last meeting to send it, to process it, it is now in the hands of the governor's office and the attorney general's office. They have acknowledged receipt of that, so they're, they've begun their review. So everything is as it should be moving forward, so.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
So I know council gave a direction at the last meeting, it asked the city attorney and city manager to take a look at the zoning on, along South Street to help our businesses that might have ancillary retail sales. And I was wondering if you could give an update on where we stand with that.
Sure. Yes, so the, I guess the direction of city council was to explore ways to see if there's a way that, that, not just that particular business, because you don't zone for a particular business, but how is it that a retail-ish type use could happen down on South Street? I did take a look at it and, and talked to administration about it, and the thought is that if city council wishes, it could refer the matter to the Planning Commission to review, because I could foresee a zoning amendment, which starts there, the process starts there, and not just saying, kick it to them, but, you know, give them some thought to, you could, rather than a rezoning situation, you wouldn't have to do anything like that. So if, if city council and Planning Commission decide that they want to have some limited retail option down on South Street, you could simply add whatever is deemed appropriate as far as a retail component down there. Obviously, you wouldn't want it to go to like a CB, Central Business District level, where that's the attraction, but the, you could have it as an ancillary use. And one of the things that we kicked around was the idea of maybe a, a limited retail, perhaps like a nine to five, Monday through Friday. So it's differentiated from, like at the downtown area, but it could, for the businesses that are down there. I know one of the examples that was, was used by Assistance League was the, like the windshield wipers at the, at an oil change, and how was that? And we justified it because it's part of the oil change process, you know, it's not, people don't come in there to buy windshield wipers. That's just an added service they provide. And I believe there's another golf, a golfing business down there that sells on, some golf clubs, not as a principal, it's not a store necessarily, but that's one thing that they do there. So we could figure out a way to add a, a, a use, a limited retail use that would be different, and it wouldn't detract from the industrial. You have to be careful not to ruin the entire industrial area, because you have to have some areas for, for industrial. But if it's industrial use, for instance, warehousing, you know, a warehousing with a limited retail component, like, you know, that could be a discussion item. So yes, so we, we have given it some thought since that direction. So if city council wants to move forward with that, I, I think it would be appropriate to give some direction to, I guess, Planning Commission to take a look at it and see what could be crafted that would accommodate that limited retail in the existing. So in zoning districts, there are three different types of uses. There's the principal use, which is you're allowed to as of right, and you have accessory uses, which are uses that are associated with the principal use. And then you have what they call special exception uses. I could envision if council wanted to proceed with a limited retail use, that you'd put it under that last category. A special projects category is not one that is just as of right or as of rate as an accessory use, but one that actually have to come in front of Planning Commission, differentiated from special project. We're not talking about special project, which would have to come here, but it would go through a discretionary vetting process by Planning Commission to make sure that it's, you know, the, the layout, the infrastructure is appropriate for whatever someone's trying to do down there with, with this retail, make sure that the safety and, and all that kind of good stuff is, so make sure it's not inappropriate towards what they're seeking. So, you know, if Planning Commission's asking, that's kind of how I would see it, is a, a special exception use concept.
City manager?
So if I may, so I'm gonna be a little harder on this. Staff's not recommending this. So normally, if we did, we would write a whole report, take it to the Planning Commission. We would instigate it and say, this is what we want you to look at. So I get that you're all getting pressure from different people, not just the Assistance League, but we need direction. We need to know if, do four people here believe that there should be retail sales in industrial district? And if that is what, instead of us guessing, what's gonna happen is you go to the Planning Commission, they're gonna ask us, staff, the planner, so what are they looking for? You need to articulate, do you want retail sales? Do you want wholesales? Do you want hours of operation? Do you want to make sure they have enough parking by the ordinance? They're gonna need direction so that they can make a decision, because it'll keep getting kicked every month. And every time we don't have answers, and we have our two liaisons, the mayor, obviously, and Mr. Housler, so you, someone needs to tell them what you're looking for. And it can't just be ancillary retail, that's way too general. Their, their job is to make it focused and turn it into an ordinance that Jeff and the city council will work on.
So city attorney, in terms of council providing that update, do we need a motion? Do you, should I give every council member an opportunity to comment on this? What do you, what do you advise?
I, I would advise both of those, which is, I would say if there's, like the city manager said, there may be people on council that don't feel that retail is, is appropriate down there. So I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to, to refer it to Planning Commission for discussion, but I wouldn't just leave it there. I would say, under what umbrella, so, so forth, I, I would say, if there's four people that want retail, are there guide rails that you want Planning Commission, because it's gonna come back here? So it's no sense in Planning Commission, looking at it, coming up with an idea, kicking it back to you, and you say, that's not what we want. So if there's specifics that you want, even if, I mean, even if you want to think about it, to talk about it up here, to tell Planning Commission what you want, it still has to go there, because that's part of the process, since it's a zoning.
Okay. And so this would be an ordinance language change, basically?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So council, let's do this. So I will entertain a motion on this, and then I would like to have some discussion on the motion. Councilmember Hauser?
Well, I will make a motion to engage in discussion to amend the zoning ordinance as it pertains to uses allowed in a particular district.
Okay. Motion by Hauser?
Support.
Support by King. So let's have some discussion around this motion regarding potential, how will we describe this, retail uses in, particularly, we're talking about industrial section on South Street.
So.
So we'll start with Councilmember Sage.
I would like an amendment then to the motion, because the motion as presented was very broad. It was any zoning.
Okay.
So if we are speaking specifically to one area, I would request an amendment to that motion, so that we can define our position going to planning.
Thank you.
Absolutely, I'll support that.
So what's, which, so that we have two districts on South Street, industrial one, industrial two?
Right.
So which, do you want both sides of the street?
I would go I one, I two.
So let's, so let's clarify, on the north side of South Street, which is along the river, that is I one, I two, and on the south side, I one. So the maker of the motion, is it I one and I two?
It would be I one and I two.
So we have a motion on the floor. We had an amendment to that motion. We accepted that motion. Okay, now let's have some discussion on the emotion, on the motion. So I'll start with Councilmember Jones.
On the motion.
On the motion.
Because it's a little confusing. I absolutely want retail, these businesses, especially the ones that are already open, to be able to sell retail. But I don't want this to be a temporary fix to an actual zoning change, because I am one hundred percent mixed use. I foresee that area becoming commercial. I'm not worried about Main Street business. They, we have a thriving Main Street. I hear constantly about how there's no vacancies downtown. I see this ending up, it might be ten years from now, as a very cool part of Rochester, where people can go down under the bridge and they can, whatever. I understand right now, we need to keep industrial. I understand what you're saying, we need a place for that. But I'm forward-thinking, which I think is what we need to do more of, of why a temporary fix, I want something that will cover forever. And mixed use, to me, would do that. That's what I think.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think I'll go back to Councilmember Sage, and that way we can just go right down the line.
I, I support the discussion.
Any other criteria?
No, I think it gives planning the opportunity to open up and give us their thoughts. We're giving them the opening here. Obviously, we've heard from constituents in this area that is there another way to look at it, right? But I think I also want to, the city attorney said something very poignant. It maybe applies here, but it definitely applies to other areas we are considering. You don't zone for a particular business. So I want all of us here to remember that as we consider every one of these zoning recommendations from planning.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sage. So Councilmember Trent?
Okay, so this may be a attorney crack. One of those businesses I am doing work for, but the whole district is what I'm concerned about. It isn't just one place, it's the full district is my concern. So I would say I can talk about the district. I would say I could.
City attorneys.
I wouldn't have an issue with it. It's a general application.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay.
I wanna do the right thing. Yeah, I am for taking a look at the zoning of the whole district, mixed use, some opportunity for future thinking, that I don't want to be handcuffed. I don't want the future development to be handcuffed. I see there's a lot of opportunity that you can't find on Main Street, because there are, there are restrictions. It's, they're Victorian-sized shops, and this one has a lot of opportunity, not just the river. I heard maybe it's a floodplain, but still, I mean, we can have options. And I like that flexibility to open up an, an area that would really make a difference in the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Hauser?
I would concur with the comments by my colleagues as it pertains to a future concept of mixed use down there. But for purposes of this discussion, what I would be looking for is some type of language and ordinance that allowed a limited retail connected to the principal purpose of that business. Okay, so that's what I would want to see, some type of language, Mr. City Attorney, that allows a limited retail that is associated or affiliated with the underlying business and its ancillary. And that we could put restrictions, you know, nine to five, you know, I, I know the golf people are open on the weekends, so if we, you know, if we handicap it at Monday through Friday, you're gonna inadvertently exclude them. So I, I think seven days, nine to five, nine to six, I don't think it's gonna be a, a burden on the infrastructure down there. But that's really what I would be kind of conceptually talking about, is, is an opportunity for these businesses to be able to have a small retail component to their otherwise underlying business. It's not their main source of, of revenue, it's, it's ancillary to that. And I, I hope I'm not being vague, and I'm trying to be a little bit more narrow, but that's conceptually what I would be looking for.
So mayor, may I, so the first three are change the whole district. That's a lot different than changing I one and I two. So it's either rewrite the whole districts or we're do I one and I two. We need to know which way we're going.
So, so I heard we're talking about changing the language in I one, I two, which I believe in our new is just one industrial district.
That's two.
So it's changing the language.
But that won't satisfy you three, right?
I need to clarify my position then. My comments were made on another zoning district, right? So I welcome this discussion. Do we, maybe we get a recommendation from planning, whether they think we should completely rezone that. I thought that this discussion was based on the current zoning or the proposed zoning for this, this zone, and that an addition of language to allow some different use.
Okay, so you're clear? All right.
I just need to build on that for a second. I agree with that. Now, I also don't know that it needs, there's grandfathered in already there. So they don't, they already are okay to sell like they are. So you mentioned the golf store, but it's already grandfathered in. So this would be for newer businesses that open. I mean, if we're gonna try and make this a narrow discussion, I feel like that's part that has to be discussed.
You're sticking I one and I two, okay.
But my only concern is, because I keep hearing this, eh, it's a master plan, we could, we got next year, we got the following year, we got the third year, we can worry about zoning over there to a mixed use. My biggest concern is, that's why I brought it up, is because I agree, we're talking about this, but if we do this, and I'm all for ancillary for these businesses, then they've kicked down the idea of changing the zoning over there, because I've heard it from several people. I just want that on record, that that is a concern of mine.
I hear you.
It's two different pockets. I get, I get what you're saying.
It's not what we're currently deliberating on. It's not what we're currently deliberating on, but I hear you.
Okay, that's it.
Councilmember King?
So I don't view this as zoning for one particular business. I think there's a number that are operating there. Well, actually, we did zone for the, the goldfish, because it specifically was added to add swim schools. So we have done it in the past.
Well, solar onyx.
We also did it for the resale connection. So I just wanna put that out there.
I agree.
The I two already has language in there that allows for that, but I one, where the Assistance League is, does not. There's already a difference between the zoning between the two.
Yeah.
But I view this as, there's a lot of businesses that are operating in the gray that would be beneficial, you know, would be positively impacted by this.
Yeah.
It removes that ambiguity. I don't view this as hindering the greater, you know, work that Planning is doing. I think they're going through a separate, these are two distinct things. And I want them to continue down the path that they're doing. But I think in the meantime, we can remove the ambiguity for a lot of the existing businesses. We can allow, you know, this particular nonprofit to operate like the rest of them. They're not running a full furniture warehouse. It is 90%, you know, they're programming. I think most of you, if not all, have been there and seen it, right? So it's a very small portion that's used as a furniture warehouse, and they want to have sales there. I don't think we should limit hours, because I think some of the others are already outside of those timeframes. But I do think the way that Christian proposed it as it is, you know, a secondary kind of ancillary use to support the primary purpose of the business would be the right way to approach it. And I fully support it.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Vixen?
Yeah, I also support the ancillary, but I also support further down, opening up to mixed use and opening up that whole area down there. So I'd like to do it all at once, but if we have to do ancillary first, I'm good with that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. For my part, I support this as well. I envision this as like the next cool section of Rochester, with an industrial warehouse kind of vibe. You know, I grew up in Cleveland in the flats, where there was, you know, industrial use and shopping, and just a really, a really cool vibe. So I support ancillary retail use down on South Street in I one and I two. And I would look to see what we could do in the future regarding mixed use. But I want to get this one issue through with a language change, because as council members have said, we're kind of operating in a gray zone. And I'm a pretty black and white person. I like, I like black and white. So I think that gives good guidance. We will take another comment, and then we will take a vote on the motion. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I just wanted to understand the timeframe. If this, obviously, I agree with this, the ancillary, the gray zone, we've been talking about this for a few months.
But does that zoning of, and talking about mixed use, does that like give a nice big Band-Aid on it to like, okay, we'll talk about this next year, or is it going to approve the zoning for now?
So if you pass the resolution, we'll refer for the, we can't do June meeting, so it would have to be the, I'm sorry, do the May meeting, it would be the June meeting where we're at, we're in May. So it would be that, we can't make the June meeting, so it would be the July meeting. Then they would start discussion. If they felt strong enough to set a public hearing for the July meeting, they could do that. And then refer that to City Council, and that would come within, and what that for that. So right into the summer.
Okay. Sounds good.
To clarify that. So do you have, first off, City Attorney, do you have enough clarity on what we're going to propose?
I do.
Secondly, we kick it, we're just nodding our heads, then? Is there an actual vote?
We're going to have, we're going to have a vote.
Okay, motion and a vote. But then it goes to Planning. It wouldn't need to come back to us. And then if Planning is like, is it an immediate change?
No.
Does it have to have a public comment?
So.
Comes back here.
Yeah. So just to set the path, so when Planning Commission considers it, they will then need to, assuming they want to move forward with it, they would set it for a public hearing.
Okay.
That's required. Then at that time, after the public hearing, then it would make a motion to send it to City Council. City Council then takes it, sets a public hearing of its own, and then it would go at that public hearing, then it would go first reading and introduction. Next meeting would be second reading and adoption. Then it goes on the books after, 10 days after publication.
So just as a top line, we are changing a zoning ordinance?
Yes. So in order to add.
We are proposing language change.
A language.
Which is, anytime you touch the language of the zoning ordinance, it's a zoning ordinance amendment.
Okay.
So if it goes down the path, I think that I'm hearing, it would be under the special exception uses for I one and I two, to add the simple change of retail use associated with the principal business on the site. I mean, it really won't be tons of details, because you didn't give any tons of details. They may say, hey, we want this, but you didn't give that direction for more detail. So I think it would be a pretty, but that would still would be a zoning ordinance change, because you're allowing a retail use in a zoning district that doesn't currently allow it.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks for the clarity.
Thank you. Councilmember Hauser?
I'm going to be the annoying client that lawyers get from time to time. If we do.
I don't have any of those.
No. Just someone, if we do a less is more amendment, meaning not a wholesale revision, but just a few isolated words that allow this, is there any chance that this could get in front of the Planning Commission for the next meeting? Nick is shaking his head, no.
We have to set agendas, we already did.
Okay. All right. I just.
The one thing you don't want to do here is treat this different than anything else.
I appreciate that.
Standard procedure. We've done this many times. I told you before, side entry garages, we'll go through it. But if we would have had, yeah, we don't have enough time.
All they want to do is manage expectations, when we get the call, when is it going to be? And I'll say, unfortunately, it's not going to be on the agenda until July. That's all.
He's got to write a report. We have to get, we have to give them 30 days to write, to write reports and do research. And then Planning Commission, every time they ask, they delay it a month, every time they need more information.
Right.
So we want to give them the best that we can right out of the gate. So if we can get through at the first meeting, that'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember King, did you have something else?
Same question. Maybe I would just make a suggestion. If, as you're preparing for it, if we feel like there's ambiguity or open questions, maybe we revisit this at the next council meeting, so we can give additional feedback prior to Planning, so they can go in with the best set of information.
Yep. Absolutely.
To hopefully prevent.
And then my other, my other question, and really feedback to City Attorney as we prepare for this, is I would hope that the discussion and clarity around any potential needed changes regarding parking and stormwater that would impact these businesses, I would think we want to make sure that that's an awareness level for Planning Commission.
Very good.
Any other comments before we take a vote?
Sorry. Just one more thing. So if we were going to bring it back to revise, it throws off our whole timing. Like today, we're giving you direction, right? Okay. Because what you were saying, to come back and, is that going to throw off this month that you need and all of this?
You're going to have a couple more meetings before Planning Commission will see it.
Okay.
For the first.
I just don't want to add more weeks onto it, because we're looking at it again.
Sure.
Okay. Awesome. Okay. Wow.
And again, because we all love Rochester so much, then we will deliberate on something like this. So City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Savia.
Yes.
Vixen.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the Planning Commission, all that other zoning stuff, I think Councilmember Sage was referring to, is that going to be talked about in the June meeting?
So in the June meeting, we are continuing our discussion regarding the implementation of the master plan and the future language map. Yes.
So do you think you guys are going to vote on that to come back to the next council meeting, or you don't know?
I don't think it's.
I don't think, I don't think we're ready for a vote yet. We could, but I don't see it.
It sounded like it was July.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Government moves at a.
Except to re-sign, they have to re, I think they already did all the notice, they have to re-notice it again as another, even though it's not public hearing, we promised the people that were affected directly, they'd get an individual letter saying that's resuming, that had to give 15 days. I think so. They're working on that right now. They just did it, so.
To be clear, so the June 2nd Planning Commission meeting, will we be talking about the zoning changes that we've talked about previously? Are those going to be in the July? Just so, July?
Jeremy, just show me the agenda, so it wasn't on the June one.
Oh, okay.
From what I understand. So I will confirm tomorrow.
All right.
Because I think the people, the neighbors want to know that.
Yes.
When it's coming up, and I didn't know.
You're right.
That's exactly why I asked.
We went to give plenty of notice and letters going on, and all that stuff, so.
So, not to be pedantic, but just to be incredibly clear, if we get an email saying or asking, will the zoning issues that we've been talking about at the very crowded Planning Commission meetings, that's not going to be discussed on June 2nd?
So I can definitively say that, yeah. Last Thursday, John Jackson asked Jeremy for the circumference of 300 feet around each one. That means they haven't gone out yet.
Okay.
Because he just finished his final reports. That has to go out 15 days prior to the meeting, which would have been not a tough time. So it would be the July.
See everyone in July.
And then we'll let, and we'll publish on the website, everybody, we're having that next iteration of the meeting at the July meeting, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, no, a second. I got you.
Thank you. All right. So I know we were in general miscellaneous, so was that the City Attorney's comment? Or was Councilmember King? Where did we?
Sorry about that.
Where did we leave off? All right, let's go down to Councilmember Sage.
Nothing further tonight.
Councilmember Jones?
Just a couple of quick things, just referring back to the comments about the ribbon cutting. It is Thursday, the 29th, and then I just want to reiterate that that, once that concert venue opens up, the first concert is on June 12th. So mark your calendars, and then the 26th, and July 10th, and the 24th. So several Thursdays and two Saturdays. So we're super excited about that. Just a skate park update. I don't know, Jason, if you want to do it, or you want me to do it? Okay. Fill it in if I miss anything. We did have a community meeting, and it was run by the design company that is doing the design for us, Spawn Ranch. It was great. I mean, there were three designs, and there was definitely the camp for the first one, there was a camp for the second one. And so he's going to work on taking, I think, tweaking the third one to fit a couple of comments about the first design. So did have, not really a stumbling block, but City Manager reminded us, you know, we're in that $500,000 budget. So the actual design of the park, including the design cost of $35,000, is at $500,000. What isn't included in that is the entryway, like the cover, and then the seating for the spectators. So we have fundraising funds that are, I think, around $25,000, who are about $8,000 short. So if anybody out there listening at home or here wants to donate a little bit to the skate park, Mr. Gallagher is working very hard. He's done a great job. He got a donation last week, and we think we'll be fine. But it will not be presented in front of City Council until we have funding for the entry. Thanks to City Manager, just a reminder that needed to be done.
But I sold a bench today, and we made some profit, so probably another $1,000 goes to the pot. So a lady wanted, she said, I'll put a bench there.
Oh, yes.
And then we keep that difference in the cost, so about $1,000. So every bench that goes there, in the plan, that's $1,000.
That was towards that. Well, thank you. I feel very confident that we're going to present this at the June meeting for approval of the plan. So that's very exciting. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I attended that meeting with my husband, and it was very well done.
Good questions. Yes.
My husband got really interested in it. So I wanted to congratulate our mayor, Savia, for being named the top women wealth advisors, the best in the state, not just this area, but best in the state. And it was in, I think it was in the Rochester Post on May 15th. And I didn't want that to go unnoticed. This is quite a lot of accolades that you've got here, Madam Mayor. It was, it looked like you got some, an interview, it said, and that it was in the selection process, included qualitative and quantitative criteria, such as industry experience, client retention, assets under management, revenue trends, and personal interviews. Shook Research also considers an impact score, so you must have hit all those nails. And that was that. And then right next to it, there is Rochester Bakery, was honored for decades of service, and there you are again, with Heather Taco, Senator Michael Weber, and me, and Mark Tisdale, Representative Tisdale. And I wanted to thank these newspapers, also Rochester Post and Community Lifestyles, for doing a really good job of telling people what we're doing in the community, and what the city's doing. And I really appreciate that. And also, they had a, Community Lifestyles, just on May 26th, had, they had an article about how the volunteers restore the headstones in historic Mount Avon Cemetery, and they got three lovely photos. Everything spelled correctly, I'd like to say. And yeah, I wanted to thank these newspapers as well. And last but not least, on the pre-work for the Memorial Day event, I wanted to thank Stephanie Burdo Smith, who not only donates her time with her children to Dinosaur Hill, she came and helped me at the cemetery on Saturday, no, no, Sunday, for many, many hours. I would have been there until midnight if she had not have shown up to help me with the cemetery garden that I had taken on, and also Sarah Helfrich helped as well. And also Maggie Bobbitts, working behind the scenes. And I know, Mayor Savia, you're going to talk about Leanne and her team and Brian. Just, there's just a lot of work to put on something like this, and the work that you did as well. So it was a very well-done parade for both cities, and I like the fact that it was both the cities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Hauser?
Sure. Just a couple of things. Over the Memorial Day weekend, the park was packed. And Nick, the park looked fantastic. There was the car show there. So many people walking in and out. Unfortunately, the weather was a little bit cool, but it was really nice to see so many people out using our park. And it's looked as good as it's ever been, Nick. So thank you to your guys, and Jason as well. Thank you yesterday for bringing your tractor out. I'll let Mayor talk about that some more, but it was a really nice weekend around town for those who were there. One other quick thing I wanted to talk about, zoning issue, we, I think we've covered, so that's done. But we've received, and I certainly have received, a few emails and some calls from residents regarding the blight. And I can assure the residents, particularly those that email, that we take these very seriously, and we're doing everything we can. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. to continue the conversation. And I think Nick sent out a note the other day. There's 112 cases that are currently pending right now with respect to blight. And I think the good part is, is the majority of these cases are resolved informally. You know, they'll get a letter, and maybe it's just an oversight, maybe they had some issues going on. But the overwhelming majority of those projects or those issues are resolved. Unfortunately, however, there are some bonds that still need to be taken care of, and I know the city's working hard to get those addressed. But I want to just let the residents know that City Council, at least I certainly do, I know we all do hear those concerns, and we take them very seriously. And finally, I'll echo what Nick said in the manager's report, is that if there's a resident out there that feels that there's a property that's blighted condition, and you are concerned about it, you can go on, there's a See Click Fits app. It works like a charm. You go and you fill out the form, and it goes right to Jason. Jason gets an alert, and he addresses it. And it's a great way for the city to track these issues and get results, and they will notify you of the action that was taken, when it was taken, and how it was resolved, and the date, et cetera. So it's a really good resource. And it's not just about blight, it's about anything. So if you see something in the city that is concerning to you, you can report it. You can use your name, you can be anonymous, whatever you want, but it'll be responded to fairly quickly. So that's the issue that I have on the blight update.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Proton?
I have a question. So for clarification, 112 code violations we currently have, are they all blight? So is everything in the city blight?
Basically, yeah. Might be, kind of grass cutting, that's not even.
That's a nuisance.
It's not even with the grass cuttings. So that was just over the period, the winter, people not doing stuff. So it was blight.
And City Manager, what's the mix of commercial to residential approximate? What's your, what's your feel on that?
I don't want to get it wrong, but probably 60/40 commercial.
Okay.
But the neighborhood ones are usually a building site, some things that, once the weather cleans up, people can take care of them. I'd say 60/40 is fair.
Okay. So I want to remind this council, the fire chief has stood before us twice and said, we don't have a blight issue in Rochester. We have an enforcement issue in Rochester. So I want us all to remember that as we debate a future blight ordinance. Could we fix this on our own without making new law? Just a question.
Let's not, let's not debate this issue here. So thank you, Councilmember Sage. Thank you for your report. Councilmember Hauser. Mayor Proton, any other general comments?
Yeah, but now I feel like I need to respond to the blight thing now. I just, are there blight issues in town? Yes. Is this town overridden with blight problems? No, in my opinion. And again, this is a solution looking for a problem. There's obviously blight stuff out there. We want it fixed. We've talked about it up here. We've talked about over the years to be more efficient at it. But I don't, I don't see a major blight problem in town that needs a major new blight ordinance. Now on to miscellaneous.
Sure.
I just want to say, I thought the Memorial Day thing was really good this year. We had a. a really good turnout, and I thought it was really cool to have a Navy SEAL kind of talking about what he did, and some of the people he lost, and I thought it was very, very, very telling, and it really made a nice, you know, a nice event, but also like a real serious tone to what we did, and I, I think it's good that our city, you know, continues to do that every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Proton. So I first wanted to start off thanking everyone for, it, it was Team Rochester out there for Memorial Day. I think pretty much everyone in city administration had a, a part in this. Certainly, thank you, Clerk O'Connor, I know Brian helped with some of the graphics, DPW, we had Carl Meyer from the parks out there helping with the, the tribute, the laying of the wreath. DPW, Jason Dickinson, you being there on your family tractor towards the start of the Memorial Day parade, it doesn't get much more Americana than that. Like, I am just so proud to be the mayor of Rochester with this type of community, it's, you know, I heard great feedback, it was family, it was hometown, it was Americana, and most of all, it, it honored our heroes. Our heroes in Rochester are not forgotten. Really, everyone was there, we had both police and fire chief, we had Lieutenant Harper, we had the honor guard, council members were there, our Rochester pollinators were there planting in the gardens. Afterwards, we had All-American hot dogs back at the fire department, social media, Marcy from wherever she was, she was posting on social media, the gravestone cleaning with the robotics and the Boy Scouts and the DAR, and Councilmember Jones, and, and of course, our residents. We did have a great turnout, and I think, you know, we've tweaked Memorial Day a couple years in the past, and so having it back, starting in our Mount Avon Cemetery, and then processing down to Rochester Hills, that really fits with our community. So I think we will be continuing that in the future, and it, it just really was a very, very special, special day for me personally. And so I just invite all the residents to come out next year as well. I will kind of tag on to that, thank you, that we are going to be commissioning a new America 250 committee. So this will be a, a time-limited committee, so at the next city council meeting, we will be staffing that committee. It will include Councilmember Sage with his historic commission hat in place, I will be chairing the committee, this will be a cross, I don't know what I want to call it, cross-organization, cross-discipline committee, including Rochester Hills, Rochester Hills Museum, our historic commission, and it will also include our plans for a bigger, better, new Heritage Days for 2026, so America 250 and Heritage Days. So lots to be coordinated and done, and it's gonna be a very exciting time in our city, but lots of work. Over the next four months, there's gonna be some meetings, a lot of work to, to get this all pulled together. So if you know people who would like to serve as part of that, please let us know, and we'll be taking those applications and hopefully making those appointments at the next meeting. Also wanted to comment that there was a, a trip to our priority waste provider.
That's right.
So we had city administration, council members there, I have a new respect for what goes in my recycle bin. So the key message is Rochester does recycle, and we're gonna be doing more education. My first takeaway was this, so yes, I did bring a visual. So these plastic bags, I don't know about you, but every time I go to recycle, I think, does this go in recycling, or does this go in the trash? So we watch people labor to pull these out of the cardboard. So there's a big machine that shakes everything down, and sorts out the glass, and sorts out the paper, but people have to pull these out, because these are not recyclable. Now what I learned today is if you want them to be reused, neighborhood house loves them. So instead of recycling, let's reuse them. So we're gonna be doing more education on recycling, but I think we're doing a pretty good job, where 90% of what goes in that green bin gets recycled, and that is much higher than a lot of other communities. In fact, I think a lot of people think, I don't even know if it gets recycled. Well, we saw it with our eyes, it does get recycled. So that was a pretty cool, as well as their technology, they have phenomenal technology in what they do, they really know what they're doing there. And I think those were my three things, one, two, three, that's it. I'll wrap up with that, and just thank you everyone for attending, meeting adjourned.